...due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Shannon?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Dee?
Yes.
Mark?
Here.
Jenny?
Here.
Now, everybody's here including the elders. You are. We need a minute for us.
Yeah. Commence from the last meeting, January tenth, two thousand eleven. zoning commission opened the meeting at seven o'clock. The following commission members were present. Yedda, Peltz, Gary Stepp, Shannon DeWolfe, Robert Saylor, and then Park Jenny DeWolfe. Residents in attendance, Daniel Van Buren and Ben Hunt, trustees, and Barbara Solig, zoning inspector, and then Frank Cooperiter. Members discussed naming a chair and vice-chair Gary Stepp made motion for Robert Saylor to be named as chair, Shannon DeWolfe seconded the motion, all in favor, motion carried. Yedda Peltz made motion for Gary Stepp to be named as vice-chair, Robert Saylor seconded the motion, all in favor, motion carried. The board trustees has requested the zoning commission to reevaluate the five acre minimum lot size for the agricultural district and consider reducing it. Shannon DeWolfe would like to see the results of the survey that the comprehensive planning committee sent out to see what the residents of the township would like. Gary Stepp feels the board trustees should be the ones to handle it this time since the zoning commission presented the lot size last time. Mr. Stepp also discussed lot size with an employee of the Danesville Health Department and says for health reasons, an septic location lot size should be five acres. Board decided they would like more information before they move forward with anything pertaining to ag lot size. Board discussed other issues with the zoning resolutions such as the twenty four regulations. Jeff Corpenney feels the board should look into the signed permit fee that the board trustees passed. It is his opinion, the board can stipulate a fee, but he feels they wrongly created a new category. Frank Cooperiter asked the board how a five acre lot size in ag district is following, saving farmland. One of the board members feels, some of the board members feels it saves farmland by having bigger lot sizes rather than smaller ones. Robert said there is a bill that might be passed by the state that would require a ten thousand dollar tax fee to be paid by any lot split under five acres. He feels the board should wait to make a decision until they find out if the bill is passed. Shannon DeWolfe made a motion to adjourn the meeting, Gary Stepp seconded the motion. Robert will contact board members for the next meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
We accept the last one. Make your motion, we accept the last. Yeah. No more standing. All papers say aye?
Aye.
All papers say nay? On the... The district zone? Major. Come on here Gary, major.
The bowling union county trustee requests a bowling meeting, uh, zoning review. One, discuss recommend their opinion regarding the current ag district on the reasons. Two, to include board opinion and possible zone, uh, spot zoning district change due to hardship created by the trustees resolutions on April twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven to not allow the Adams to go to the house. Alter location is out here on Rockford. I don't feel we should go over this five acres again. We went through it, it cost the township money, and everybody, the majority of people we talked to, they, uh, the, uh, thing we sent out for...
Survey.
Survey, yeah.
Which never did get anything back supposedly. I think, I mean, it's been so long ago now, but I think we were told that that wasn't actually broke down and...
Yeah, it was.
Yes, it was.
I know, but I couldn't get that information.
The second one was, the first one.
The first one didn't go in.
Right, the second one, I'm in. And I agree, for once, I agree with you Gary. It's beating a dead horse. We did what people asked, that came to the meeting. If the trustees want to change their darn bad, then they can do their job.
Exactly.
They have just as much power to do it as we do.
Wait through all the motions, one through...
I mean, we spent months on that whole deal. It was not a one meeting and said, "Yep, that's it, it's five acres, let's go." I mean...
Didn't happen.
As far as this top one, this was top, I don't even know details, this god, well, Adams' house. I mean, I know about the deal over here, and I know about the resolution, but they're so, they're asking us to spot zone a piece of property, so they don't have...
They still, they still got a bowling green for, yeah, a bowling green address. They need to submit an application. Went to the zone, right?
Yeah, it went through appeals and failed.
That's not, that was for five acres, right?
For an acre, that, they want to do an acre.
One acre?
And it failed through...
They didn't, they weren't given the right information in the first place. Okay, what did they go to the zoning appeals board for? To get a change, so that... To get away from the five acres, correct? Huh? To get away from the five acres, correct? Not necessarily. Well, what did it go, what was the application for? Just... What'd they want to do? They want, they can't, if they give, if they give us them five acres, they'll land lock the other forty some odd acres.
What did they want to do?
They want to...
All they're doing, they can't build here.
Why?
Trustees said they couldn't.
Why did the trustees say?
The trustees did not say they could not build there.
They have to do the setback.
The trustees said they could not build on the setbacks.
Would you like me to read the actual trustee's resolution? Or you can. April twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven.
I want to know why they went to the board of zoning appeals.
Yeah, why?
I couldn't put that one out myself. Uh-huh. I was to give us to give them the right to build all three quarter of acres up here. That's what I thought.
They wanted the variance for the five acres.
That shouldn't have it. Everybody else is... Yeah, right, basically. They wanted variance from...
An appeals board turned them down.
Right.
So now they want us to spot zone it to get around the five acre.
No, we're not here.
No, I don't... First of all, they ought to have an application and tell us what they want to do.
What was the reason for them to build over there?
I found out all the type of safety regulations.
Safety reg, what safety?
Well, it's too close to the road, I guess.
Right.
It's all, they can't build on the setback.
If the house is existing?
No, wait a minute. You don't take...
Calm it down.
It's what?
The one that got hit by the...
Shut up!
Yeah, but it's existing, don't forget it.
No, wait a minute, this house is already here.
Yes.
So whatever's here, it's already grandfathered in.
Right.
So, what happens there is they can, they should have been able to build on the same...
On my original footprint.
Footprint.
Yeah.
Can't expand it, but they, but they can make it the same as what is there.
And they should go back to the trustees and appeal it to them.
That's what should have, should have been no argument over.
Yeah, but we shouldn't be involved in it.
No, we shouldn't. Why did the trustees not, not allow something that's already there?
The resolutions right there, Gary.
Yeah, but they have an appeal process with the trustees.
The engineers said they cannot, Licking County engineers said they cannot because they're impeding on their road right of way also.
Okay, there you go.
It's different from...
The grandfathering.
The resolution was made by the trustees, not by the engineer.
That is, a Licking County road, not a township road.
Licking County engineer controls the county road right of way and the state right of way.
Township doesn't control that.
The township trustees made the resolution.
Yeah, but they don't control...
They don't control road.
Even if they have made the resolution, they don't let them...
Then we need the engineer's recommendation and paperwork that states that. Because then Licking County's gonna have to come back and compensate them.
That's fine, that's not our issue.
I know, I know that's not our issue, but I'm just saying...
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine, that, that's between them and the county engineer and whoever, but it's got nothing to do with zoning.
Right.
And if they want to apply for zoning change, then they fill out the application, go through the paperwork. But right now, I don't think it's even be, be, be before us.
State, what did you...
It's between the county and, like you said, the county.
They filled out all the pertinent paperwork.
Paperwork was all filled out.
And then it was taken for some reason to the zoning board. But we have paperwork too, I mean, just like we went through...
Only the appeals board was probably the one.
Five acre.
Dingy, where's that letter from?
And the appeals board turned them down. Now they want us to spot zone to get away from it.
They said they can't build in the right of way.
But if they, if they want to apply for rezoning, fill out the application.
The appeals board application was the only one.
And we'll look at it and then go to the application for recommendation and back.
I don't keep that.
Do the proper check. But I think you were correct, they should go to the county or the local council and go out.
The only one I had was the appeals when I gave them the other fact, I asked them to fill them out, and they reduced them in case. If I don't meet them, they...
Now you're dealing with both of them.
Yeah, they're dealing with both of them.
For the appeals board, yes.
No, for the engineer.
The engineer letter, yes, it's in the file at Corpenney's house.
I don't have the file, I requested it, but I didn't get it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jenny's getting ready to get it.
This is, this is not...
No, I think until we, we had an application, fill it out the way it's supposed to be, we shouldn't even be talking about it.
Yep, it was filled out. And where is, where is?
We filled it out.
But we have our own paperwork. We have our own.
Okay, but, Licking County...
We followed the procedure, we filled out three applications, so one we didn't hear and it was already...
That's what I'm saying, it's about square one, start over, and this all too...
They got no, you know, we got a hearing now.
He's trying, he's not doing it.
You got what? We have to sort of date the hearing. We can't pass anything tonight.
Well, no, we haven't even gotten an application, we can't set a hearing, we don't even have an application.
It, how this works, we asked how the procedure was at a township meeting. We were told, we filled them all, all three paperwork, all three papers were filled out at one time.
Did what?
We followed for the, my understanding was supposed to come to this board first.
For what?
For what?
Are you talking about coming down here to spot zone, or are you talking about the house over here on six sixty-eight to refill?
See, we don't even know, we don't see any maps, applications.
Nothing, nothing, we need some.
We don't know what you're talking about.
Uh, we were just following what we were told, even though I'm sitting on, we followed the procedure that we were told to do.
What is it you're asking us to do? Spot zone or rebuild the house?
Well, they were told, we can ask to rebuild the house, I mean, I'm just going, they, they were told...
I'm talking about rebuilding the house, I'm talking about spot, spot zone.
They were told...
What zoning are you asking for?
A spot variance to rebuild on an acre.
I know, but zoning has...
You need to rebuild, you're talking about building.
Correct.
All right, you need to use the right terminology, so we understand what you're talking about.
What zoning district are you applying for? Ag district, R one, R two, one and one.
We don't have maps to tell us what the district is.
Ag.
It's ag.
Ag is a five acre minimum.
That's simple.
That's why you got turned down at the appeals board.
Okay.
I mean, that's... I'm just telling you, we follow the, the procedures and they never follow through. And here we are again, and we didn't do this as a miss, and we did everything that we were told to do.
Who didn't follow through?
Well, you aren't, you aren't trying to rezon, and it's already ag zone. What's a zone, where do you want to build? Ag. Okay, then you're not rezoning, and it's already ag. My understanding it was supposed to be what, they put a spot variance so he could build the house up there.
So you're asking for a spot zoning?
Yes, ma'am.
In an agricultural area?
Yes, ma'am.
Which we haven't seen maps or anything to see what that looks like.
And what zone do you want if you don't want ag?
Yeah, what do you want?
I believe it's our one, on our chip.
That's what I say, you gotta fill an application, tell us what you got, what you want. You're saying you want ag, it's already ag.
Yeah, uh...
And it's five acres.
Yes. And ag is five acres, that's why you want... Well, then maybe they should go back to the county and tell them they want to rebuild over there where they're at. Yeah, I mean, it's not something for us to even deal with. I mean, the whole concept was to try to get them to not have to build over there.
You know, and I'm...
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm sitting on, I mean, if you're in ag zone, if you're in ag zone, and it's five acre minimum, and you didn't want to give them five acres or sell them or whatever, then that's probably why you were told to go to the zoning board of appeals to appeal the five acre, and they said no. So now, as I understand it, you want to change the zoning from ag for something that will allow less than five acres.
Yes.
But we don't know what you're applying for. Yes, I understand. So, that's what I'm saying, if you get the paperwork for a zoning amendment, fill it out, tell us what you want, then at least we can make a recommendation. Well, I, I really do apologize about the paperwork didn't get to you, all the paperwork was filled out, it just hasn't gotten to you, you folks. But was it for zoning change? Uh, what was that for, all, what was all the paperwork that got out?
The only one that I took from you was for the appeals.
No, you took three papers from me.
I gave him back the one for the rezoning, Mr. Adams, right here.
Ooh. Appeals has their own paperwork, and in the zoning commission...
Because I did not need those, I told him to hang on to those. Yes, you have.
I brought, I brought all three of those back out to you.
I've never received all three.
And left them, I believe with you, because she wasn't hungry, she went down to the...
And that was a wrong answer, because I do not have those papers. The last time I remember, I answered it here.
The paperwork was all filled out.
He was on first.
It was filled, it was filled out. I apologize, it was all...
You want to state that?
I understand.
He, he doesn't remember it either, so, he's not the zoning expert.
I still have a hearing due.
No, well...
General, I do apologize, I mean, it was all, but that's not your fault, I mean, I do, it was all done, it just isn't here with you. When this one down...
Can I, can I say one thing? I'm reading this thing here, and I'm, I guess I'm gonna ask, we have the trustees here. I don't understand, trustee often asks if the board voted to not allow them to build from the right of way, they will still receive the money vote. The attorney said, well, all the trustees feel they do not want to prevent them from rebuilding on the progress field, it is too much, it has safety hazards, the house will be rebuilt from being location. Trustee, huh, made a motion not to allow the Adams to rebuild the house in the right of way. Where does the trustees have a, have an ability to say you can't do something when it's already there, like we were talking about? You don't have the right to do that.
In nineteen fifty-seven, ORC code they pulled out, is the answer, is how they did it.
Nineteen fifty-seven?
Well, the other thing they'd have to get them to be the Licking County building requirements.
But it's already there. The print is already there, it's not on the notice, they're not...
Well, if it is, they have to, they should just wrap it.
If they don't, it's a, it's a problem. If it is, then states might have to compensate them.
Is that something?
There's nothing to do with that.
If that's, if that's... I'm sorry, it's already there. If you were building it, yes, you're right.
This is...
No, yeah, I got it.
That's what it's been, it's been expanded.
You're not going to try what you have.
They're in a building by the...
On six sixty-eight, on six sixty-eight.
It's just like the RC code.
When you rebuild on six sixty-eight, are you going to rebuild it or are you tearing it down and building a new house?
It has to be tore down, but I, I was under the impression that I could not rebuild on a, I could not rebuild on that piece of ground. If I can't build on the right of way, it does not even help for a house, a septic and a water.
How long's the house been there?
Uh, nineteen hundreds.
So they widened the road right of way.
That's right.
And they didn't take your house.
Right.
If they would have, they'd have used eminent domain, but they didn't do that. But now, since it's been destroyed, they're saying you can't replace it.
But it can fight.
Well, you can get paid for it.
You can get, and... Well, they have a redemption.
But that's not our issue, the issue is you want to go into an agricultural district that has a five acre minimum. And the zoning, the board of appeals said they're not going to give you a variance. So you can either build on five acres, or I understand what you want to do is rezone it to something, and we don't know what that is, with a different lot configuration, and then we make a recommendation based on that. But your fights with the state or the county or whatever, all, all you want to do is go build on, in an agricultural zone that says five acre minimum, whoever didn't want to give you five acres or sell you five acres. So they appealed to the board of appeals to get a variance for the five acre lot, and they said, "No, you can't do that." Take what you heard that night, and look for, look at, the zoning appeal meeting. What was that, what, what was said at the zoning appeals meeting that night?
Which portion?
I don't know.
What was their determination? I mean, we know why it turned out, did they, I mean, the reason was just because they didn't want to give an acre.
No, they couldn't, they, I don't think they understood. They, they, they didn't realize that they could give him a variance to do that.
That was on the...
Yeah. We've been through it, I mean, yeah. We did it.
If we saw a flat.
This is, this is definitely a hardship, period.
We need, no, it isn't.
No, no.
No.
But that's not for us to be determined.
What do you mean, no?
This is a choice.
Did, or did they not tear down that house?
I was on the floor.
That house is still standing there.
I turned it down.
And it's tore down.
We're not talking about this, we're talking for that, or we're...
What we're talking about is the lot that's over here, not that lot.
I was on the zoning board that night, I turned it down.
But we're not talking about the house here.
We're talking about...
It's not about turning it up.
So let's not, let's not confuse the two things.
We're talking about that lot.
The lot.
Why we're tearing it down, it's five acres.
Right, it needs to be five acres.
And you could have given them a variance.
Nobody can.
Don't say no, I know you can, read the damn rules! But they didn't.
It's not a hardship.
They failed. Gary, but they didn't.
They sent no show to her.
No. He didn't. He didn't.
One person can't do it.
He's the only one that didn't do it.
I need that.
So he took it for it. They, it was...
Yes, and it was Corpenney's vote that made it five acres.
Where did these people get them? Right there, that's the other one that didn't want to talk about it.
It is public order.
It's public record.
It is.
Him and Watkins did not want to talk about it, they could have changed it that day. It's him, not him. But that's not for us to talk about tonight.
You see?
So don't come up with that, tell us. Wait a minute, wait a minute, there was a rumor always going around right after that, that these people in Brownsville could not sell their lots because it was a five acre minimum.
Well, that's not true, we're talking about two different areas here.
No, after that, after we made that five acre.
That's cultural, that is not agricultural.
I know, I heard that also, and that's not true.
That's very good.
They can.
Yes.
Well, let's just stick with the issue at, at your place, where much different we are.
Let's get the applications to us.
If you do a lot split, we need to see the circumstances. We need to see the lots, we need to see the front.
Yeah, we need a map.
We need the map, yeah. It has to be on.
That we'll get it to you.
Being in construction for twenty-five years and development.
Okay.
Okay, I'm very nice here. I still say the best be...
We also need to go by six point eight of the zoning resolution? You need to notify everybody in the area, around this area, you want change?
We know that.
We know.
You also have fifteen days to put it out in paper, you're supposed to write...
There should be a list.
The meeting fifteen days after according to six point eight of your zoning resolution.
There's a step.
It takes like two hundred.
I need a good attorney personally, but...
Have you done on that issue?
Yeah.
How quick can it...
On, on the five acre, whoever, where did he go? There he is, hiding.
No.
I don't blame you, I'd hunt you.
No. I gotta watch, I'm sitting on the board, but it's, you need to understand, the acreage and the person involved is me and my son.
What?
Okay, and the reason you can't get five acres is I have a barn up there that I'm not, can't, giving you my barn, so the idea is to give you...
You can.
Well, I can, but I don't want to give you my barn.
So it's a bit comic.
We have a very narrow eleven acres that tees into four.
How, why is it, why, it has to have the right footage in order to be split, even if you split it down, it has to have a one to three way show.
Yes.
And so, it's, zone for five acres, if, and the reason that you don't want to give the five acres is because of the barn?
Well, that, the fact that we have a narrow, most people see a, a piece of property as a rectangle, square.
I know.
Ours is not, ours is a narrow eleven, goes back into forty.
So how, well, we need to see the plan.
Yes, yes, ma'am, you do. That was all here, you know, but, yes. But you're not applying for a variance now, you're applying to change the zone.
That's different.
Correct? You want me to be honest with you, sir?
You don't know.
I really don't know.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I, you want me to tell you, I asked, I tried to follow the procedure, and you're asking my questions right now, but I really can't answer them.
I think we get table, this is a spot zone.
But we don't want to have a hearing once. No, we have nothing to have a hearing on. We have to do the paperwork.
We need to have a meeting.
Once you get the paperwork, another meeting?
Yeah.
Soon as we get the paperwork.
Yeah, you can bring paperwork and that, so we can see the whole thing.
We can see what's there, and then we can discuss.
The people that has something to do with it.
And you're not allowed to vote. I know, too. I tried to stay back, but you kept asking me questions, it's not going easy.
This is, I asked, can I have the paperwork? This, this, the back part, the donation board, is the back part you're going on in the local township?
No.
It's all in Bowling Green?
It's all in Bowling Green.
Okay.
But it's, it's in two different school districts zones.
Okay.
But it's all in Bowling Green.
Okay, 'cause I know the line's back in there somewhere.
Yeah, the front eleven's in, uh, west, and the back forty is in south. But it's all in the township. I get to pay taxes and vote.
They got my merit.
It was done back in two thousand three, but between then and now... Well, in that, they filed fifteen hours, four, they never filed it. The paperwork was done, they never filed it. But it didn't even... They didn't even grant it to do the five acres.
But it's in west.
The board of appeals.
And the reason the county didn't want it is because the traffic on that road changed it from a minor artery to a major artery, which widened the distance between the driveways. I'm surprised the county gave it. Yes, the more traffic you got, the more traffic you have, the more distance you have to have between the driveway. Safety. And between two thousand three and whenever he filed it. And the other thing, now, in Licking County, if you file for a lot split, and don't record it after one year, it's void. They're not, they wouldn't have one. We knew that, that's the number one year, what we do. But I think the county granted it because the board of appeals granted the variance. But that was up to their... I've heard from Cincinnati, so... Oh, they haven't granted that? I don't know what they did, the billboard did, but I don't know what county. So you still got a pass to count? Yeah, basically, I don't know how quick he was going to do it. So, but they, you know, the billboard did it. And then, once you run into, is if somebody has an issue and they want to, they want a variance, okay? We're going to say that's a hardship, and we'll give this guy variance. Next guy comes in and says, "Well, my hardship's good or better than his, well, how come you're not giving me one?" And once you start down that road, you might as well throw out the budget.
You started, said you're president.
That's right, and who said, "We want a hardship yet?"
Just like spot zoning was set in precedent.
I tell you right now, the county will not approve the zone. Absolutely not. And it goes against the comprehensive plan, number one, but, and then spot zoning's the same thing, if you come in and we spot zone you, he comes back next month, he wants spot, hey, you got a zone over here, a zone over here, a zone over here.
And then the attorney will say, "Well, you did it there."
You might as well throw out your zoning, sir. So you guys are telling me that's not a hard thing to do, we can't build back? We're not counting it.
No, that's nothing to do with that, that's nothing to do with what we're doing.
No, no. Nothing to do with what we're doing.
Nothing at all.
That's zoning.
Two different subjects.
We're not on zoning appeals. Wasn't that the thing? I have no idea. We're on zoning appeals. Wasn't that the thing? I have no idea.
Well, wasn't there any there?
In, in our opinion, in my opinion, they should not be not permitted to rebuild where they are. They should be allowed to do that. They can rebuild as long as they.
Nobody, nobody, no insurance company would ever insure that close.
Why is original house on a right of way? Yes, it is. And Lincoln County said they will not allow them to rebuild that house on the road.
And the house was built.
So they have to put it back.
And no insurance company would insure.
No, no, no. Did you have insurance?
Back in, yeah, a hundred and five years old or something. Hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy years old. I'm sure six sixty-eight.
But can you build on the same place but move your house, move the, move it back? They won't let you move it back off?
Now, if you've got a historical association, you might add.
And they have to buy by the.
Sure.
That's true. That's true. Yes.
Because of the house of its age and everything.
Yeah, but now, yeah. But anyway, I suggest we table this until they submit an application, and then it tells what zoning you want. But they won't, I tell you, the county won't spot zone it.
The county's not the one that makes that decision. If, if this process moves forward.
County makes a recommendation.
That's right. It's not a decision, it's a recommend.
Correct. It's like there's no expiration date.
We have our. Exactly. Just wanted to make sure you understood that.
We have answers here to all of that.
All right.
Who's D is writing that? Hey, geez, that paper that, that we made, I don't know what that is.
That's, uh.
What? Number three.
I don't know that.
What?
That, that paper that said the township's made a motion that they couldn't build that district on right of way, what? There was.
What'd you read?
The motion.
That motion, it was never.
They'll rebuild on setbacks or right of way.
Turn around.
Oh, it says on the right of way. You write. Can we build a house? Can we build a house? On the right of way, but they're not going to build that house on the right of way. It's just part of that, whatever was there, they're not going to go on the right of way and build a house.
Yeah.
They're going to, it's just a part of it. It's what was already there. It's grandfathered in.
Okay, good.
But that, that's up to the county.
Yeah, we can't.
That's, they can.
I sound like that, but that's ridiculous.
They have water.
No, but they did have, so that's the thing. It's not, that's the same.
I'm surprised the insurance company, they're giving trust funds. But they, well.
Looking for my company. Yeah. So you're following.
I just have a question. If they were to rebuild on that lot, if they had to step back and all that. It's a hazard. It was a hazard before. You cannot see coming down North Street to pull out on six sixty-eight.
Or if they rebuilt, they'd be backwards. Yeah, they'd have to move back and like. I, I mean, like I said, that didn't really live.
And right now, it's a nuisance.
I have a vague understanding.
You can't see something down North Street or you can't see them as six sixty-eight.
Is there that ground behind it that's not moving back?
Can't get around on Sunday. I mean, is that, that's the issue. I mean, you would have a box sized house.
Correct. In order for me to move that footprint of that house, I would now have to change everything to the new code.
Right.
Which means there's not enough room on that lot to put a septic and a well, because they have to be separated by more, you know, at least a hundred foot.
Okay, so that issue's kind of.
That is, yeah.
It's a lot, isn't it?
So the.
Extremely small. I mean.
Like a quarter of an acre or fifty by fifty or what?
Oh, yeah.
Quarter of an acre.
Yes.
And when it was built, it didn't have long septic, right?
Probably.
That's why Brownsville needs a.
And we're not going to decide that yet.
No, I don't have a good idea.
Everybody's remember that. Yeah, that's true.
You got any other issues here?
I don't have any right now with this. The order is five nineteen twelve.
You go.
What is that?
You want my glasses?
Number three.
I was saying, same thing. Playing sign and probably property are not defined and put down for zoning resolution.
We want to, uh, they're not the same thing. It says box hardship. It is. Number three, earliest date that could be set for spot zoning hardship.
Yeah, if we set it, if we were to set it, we'd hear it.
Okay, so the next thing is the sign.
Business from last.
Yeah.
Next one there. Need a sign.
Mostly food for playing sign on property that are not defined for that current township's own resolution. Well, who's? Who am I getting to?
Town of trustees.
But it's not up to us.
I don't know. I was working here, following up on residents' cluster claims.
No, like one fifteen.
Yeah, but it's just talked about all.
Why would we have elected the purpose? But how bad if we're supposed to sign out?
This is what.
The women in motion.
We didn't, no, they didn't. They didn't do it.
So I guess you're asking if we want to put it in or sign. I mean, I, I mean, if.
Actually, nobody would.
I mean, but I already got it. It was from the, the resolution state.
Resolution that says you have to sign conforming stuff.
Yeah. And is it mentioned a dollar amount or?
Yeah. Do you have?
Okay, so where we have that.
For signing.
For non-conforming.
For non-conforming?
Twenty-five dollars a month.
Can I get a copy of your agenda, please, so I can see what you guys are talking about? And you really need to notify the zoning inspector, and she needs a copy of this, so she knows what you're talking about prior to the meeting.
Okay, I told.
As the board president, should notify the zoning inspector and make sure she has a copy.
I just got it myself.
Yeah, see, and that's, that's a problem.
We just got it.
That's a problem.
As we walk in.
Because you should be aware of what's going on prior to this meeting setting up. You're the president. Okay?
See what you got into?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter. It all looked out of wash.
So who typed this agenda?
I did.
You did? And who are you?
I know who I am.
Your name?
I don't know who you are.
How many, how many, how many meetings you came to?
I'm sorry, how many meetings you been to?
Three. Who's running this meeting?
I know you've been more than.
Yeah.
Can we move along?[1556.04]